Always do is approve the agenda. Has everyone on council had a chance to look at the agenda? Anybody seen the need to change or move anything around?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor say yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. I hope everybody took a look at this. I had one quick question, Shannon, on number four. It says, the wording of that says not to exceed, I think, 24 million, but they're only getting eight, right?
Yeah.
Is that something not to worry about?
No, I think it's the language they gave us.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from consent agenda? Yes, sir?
I have a quick question on number three. Is that speed limit change, which is very welcome? Is that the result of your conversations with you and Betsy talking with NC DOT? Or was that independent?
That was in the meeting that we had with NC DOT traffic folks.
Great, great.
What it is, there's been a higher speed limit up there and nobody knew it.
Yeah, they came to the meeting letting us know that they were.
Ah, wonderful.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Everyone say yes if you approve?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Public comment, the public is always invited to attend the meeting and speak. We do stream this meeting live on YouTube. No one signed up to speak? Is there anybody last minute would like to make a comment to town council? Okay, great. Next item, presentations and reports. It's absolutely unbelievable, not unbelievable, but it's absolutely outstanding, the presentation that Sherry and Nancy are going to make tonight. I went to the National, the North Carolina Mayors Association. I didn't realize there's a whole bunch of towns in trouble and having various problems. Thank you and thank you, the fact that we're not. So I'll give the floor to Sherry Patterson.
Well, thank you so much for that. I'd like to introduce, most of you already know Nancy Lux. She is the CPA that heads our audit for the last few years. And she is here tonight to fulfill her statutory requirement to report to you on her audit findings for the last fiscal year, ending June 30th of this year.
All right, thank you for that, Sherry. And I definitely want to thank Sherry and her finance department staff, Janice, for all their help. They're very, very accommodating. The binder, if, I think, Jim, you've been through our audit room and you've seen the work paper binder that they assemble for us every year, which provides pretty much, you know, every requested document that we need. So here we are with June 30, 2025. And I first want to start out and just say, thank you again for having our firm present your audit or prepare your audit and present it to you again for another, I think this is 12 years going now. And thank you to the board. I know a lot of you participated in the fraud questionnaires that I send out and I do appreciate your responses. I do read those thoroughly and appreciate your comments on a variety of things. I want to also say that this audit, we're not quite yet to the finish line due to the OMB not approving the 2025 compliance supplements. And I think every town in Western Carolina and actually the whole USA for federal single audits is at a standstill waiting for the OMB to bless these 2025 compliance supplements. Sherry did inform me that she went to a LGC conference the last couple of days. And initially, they had stated auditors could not present their report. And I kind of panicked, but then the next day they came back and said, no, it's okay if the auditor is comfortable that there won't be any changes once the final supplements are issued. I'm fairly confident that the final compliance supplement will be exactly like the one that I used in auditing the federal, the FEMA money essentially. There was just one pot of federal money that you all received this year and I'll discuss that in my report. So anyway, we don't know the final date. It'll be whatever date the OMB finally blesses those supplements. And then when I do issue that final report, there'll be a dual dating. The compliance, the federal single audit report will have the date of the compliance supplements being finalized. The audit report is dated November 1st. That is the date that I technically feel my procedures have ended with regard to subsequent events and, you know, the regular financial part of the audit. When I do have those final reports, we'll get you all a dozen copies or so and either mail them. And then there's a couple just housekeeping things that I mentioned to Shannon and Sherry. But without further ado, I will present to you what I have now. It is a draft form, but like I said, I do not anticipate any changes to any numbers. I will have some additional discussion of why I'm dual dating. And that's pretty much the only changes that I anticipate. So what you have up on the screen right now are the graphs that are part of the MDNA. And I really want to encourage you, I know you all, I think, have received a draft number four copy, I believe it was called. If you really want to take some time, I'd say one of the most informational sections is the MDNA section that starts after the audit report on page four and goes through page 14. Both my inputs and, it's actually management's, you know, Sherry and Shannon put a lot of work into writing this. I kind of assembled the numbers and the ups and downs and increases and decreases, but it gives you a good reference as to how things have changed from the prior year as well as the future economic impacts and budgets and all that stuff. So it's probably, if you're going to read anything in this audit report, I'd focus on the MDNA. But on the graph, what you'll see consistent with pretty much all of our years, property taxes are a big chunk of the town's revenues, over 48%. But this year, we did have pretty much secondary to that, well, sales taxes is secondary to property taxes. But then third highest revenue source was extraordinary revenue. I'll talk more about that as we go through the report. Of course, that's all related to the FEMA, the FEMA program. In the expenditure side, it's by department. Public safety is our largest department comprising over 25% of spending. But you'll see this year, almost 32% of spending was related to the flood, the disaster, the cleanup. It was well over $3 million spent just on that alone. So pretty big, you know, pretty interesting graph when you look at how things changed from the prior year. Okay, now I'm going to go to page, whoops, 15. I think I went too far. Oh, is that page 10? Okay. Well, all right, I'm looking for one of the... And I should also mention that we did issue an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest opinion.
Let me make this a little bigger for you.
Oh, yeah. Say, I can see mine, but I can't see, I don't know if y'all can see on the screen, probably.
We can, but she's going to enlarge it.
Okay, is that a little better? There you go.
And you can use the same arrows.
Same arrows, okay, thank you. We issued an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest opinion that we can issue. So we had no reasons to modify it for any particular reason. On page 15, I just wanted to point out, you'll see your cash balances. You've got cash and unrestricted cash. Combined together, there's a slight increase in cash compared to the prior year, not, you know, not too much movement. Of course, there was a lot of money spent on, you know, flood-related issues. The biggest change on this statement of net position, you'll see that I specifically broke out accounts receivable related to FEMA. We felt that was, I felt that was significant, and I think Sherry did too, to point out how much we are still waiting to receive from FEMA. And we have equally, well, not exactly equally, we've offset that by a liability type account. Actually, it's called a deferred inflow, but it works like a liability. And it was all the unobligated FEMA receivables. We kind of parked that there until we felt we were certain that FEMA was going to reimburse our, our, what do you call it, invoices that we submitted to them or obligated those. It was a conservative way to treat the FEMA receivables by not recognizing them. And I believe, Sherry, you told me that to date, you've gotten all that was obligated at the time of the audit and plus about 29,000 more or 26,000 more.
All was obligated.
You got all that.
Our big money was in debris collection. We reimbursed them and we have not received an obligation on that yet. But we have made significant progress and I'm confident that we're going to get there pretty soon.
Okay, so in the future, as we get FEMA money obligated to us, the plan will be to then recognize those into the revenues and do a reversing of the, as they're collected, the receivable and the deferred inflow. So for now, I was pretty comfortable that we've conservatively recognized the revenues based on what we knew we were planning to get from FEMA or obligated amounts that they told us were obligated. Okay, on the next, oh, good, I just popped it there. Page 16 here. Again, you'll see a couple new line items there, the extraordinary items. There's a whole footnote on page 34 that discusses the, or actually the extraordinary items at the end of the footnotes. Page 34, I believe, talks about the FEMA AR and the deferred inflows. And I'll flip to that when we get there. But two extraordinary lines. One represents the spending for the cleanup, 3.197 million. The other line represents the grant reimbursements, which in total is equal to what I'm showing on the CIFA schedule. The compliance supplement that I used did discuss showing as federal grant or expenditure money what you had obligated. And that was exactly what we had obligated at June 30, 2025. But we break that out and then we discuss that in a little bit more detail later on in the footnotes. Page 17 is our balance sheet of our governmental type funds. We've got the general fund and the capital project, or the Greenway Capital Project Fund. You'll see, and then it reconciles to the full accrual statement. The next one is the revenues and expenditures statement for the governmental type funds. And you'll see at the bottom of this one, because this is on the budgetary basis of accounting, we have an additional extraordinary item that we disclose. It's the NC Cash Flow Loan for Disaster Response. We went in for two rounds and subsequent to year end, a third round. So at the period I was auditing, a little over 1 million was received. That is a loan in budgetary accounting. It's a revenue, but when you convert it to full accrual, it flips to your balance sheet as a loan. But that money was also subjected to a state single audit. And that money is supposed to be used to pay your bills and whatnot related to the disaster while you're waiting for FEMA to obligate and actually send you their funds. But I wanted to point out the difference, why you don't see that on the full accrual statements. You're now seeing it in the budgetary presentation. And on page 20 is the original budget, final budget, our actual numbers. And you'll see that there's no overspending. Everything was properly budgeted or amended if need be. There were seven amendments during the year. So the town always does a great job of pre-auditing expenses and making sure that there are amendments to accommodate changes in spending. We also have, again, the proprietary fund for the Stormwater Utility Fund. Won't really talk about that. That really, pretty much was similar to last year. It comes right after the general fund. It made about the same amount of money, just a little bit less, but it, you know, is doing well for you. And you've got the county now collecting those funds, so certainly makes that easier than the first year. Okay, I'm going to flip to the footnote on page 34. The footnotes are generally the same as they've been in prior years with some additions. The first one being that footnote number five, accounts receivable FEMA and deferred inflows, unobligated FEMA receivables. So I talk about the flood, as we all know, and that we've been working with FEMA. And, you know, again, I mentioned how FEMA has obligated or approved 1,40,642 in federal funds. That was the amount subjected to single audit. And the unreimbursed request, which were a little over 3 million, we've not recognized those into revenues yet, but we will as they become obligated. The rest of the footnotes, we've got the lawn, you know, all the actuarial-based calculations, which, if you can't go to sleep at night, just start reading these. They're quite lengthy and I sometimes wonder who really digs into these because they're pretty elaborate. Okay, I'm looking for page 51. Okay, page 51, the second to the last page of our footnotes. We've got note six, the extraordinary item. Of course, that's new this year. You know, we talk in depth about how, you know, or again, it's similar to the FEMA footnote, but we talk about how, you know, FEMA's recognized 1,406,42. And we also mentioned the state cash flow loans for disaster, which were 1,176,000. And subsequent to year end, in the subsequent event footnote, we obtained round three for 400,072. Now, one thing I'm thinking for next year already, will we have a single audit next year? I would anticipate that as FEMA obligates, now next year, the limit goes up to 1 million, meaning that you're required to have a single audit if you spend more than 750,000 in federal grant money. And you guys spent 1,42,000, et cetera. I would anticipate if FEMA obligates more than a million in this next fiscal year, that will trigger a federal single audit. I'm not sure if you'll have to have a state single audit. You'll have Powell bill money and you've got this loan money. But I don't believe the existing loans get carried forward into the calculation. I'm pretty sure they said they don't.
They don't, but we'll have some federal match, remember, just manage a stock match and we will have those.
Okay, so you'll be over. And the limit goes up to, I'm thinking on state, it goes up to, it's either 750 or 1 million. It's 500,000 right now, but it'll, I believe there was an increase in the state also. But not to worry about that too much. And then the last page of the footnotes, we did have one new accounting principle that we implemented. The GAZB came up with GAZB 101 on compensated absences, where you now have to accrue your estimate of sick time that you will actually pay out of pocket to your employees. We did a look back approach in calculating that. It wasn't really super significant for the town. I think everybody's so busy. Well, I don't know, it seemed like, no, Sherry, you said you don't. Sherry doesn't take any sick time or not much, doesn't have time for sick time. So we did implement that standard. Like I said, it wasn't, I didn't feel, it added $43,000 to your liability, which didn't seem like a big amount of money to me. The next section is all the supplemental data for the town. Page 58, I kind of like looking, if you like, looking at how the general fund is doing in a fairly detailed manner compared to budget. We've always kind of line item by line item listed all the various revenue line items and expenditures for each of the departments. And like Jim said earlier, you know, compared to other towns in North Carolina, Woodfin has a significant tax base. The tax base did increase a little bit this year by about 250 some odd thousand dollars. Sales taxes, as expected, were actually down about 13,000 from last year. But you can imagine that makes sense with the flood happening in September, the height of, you know, tourist season. And those sales tax revenues were lost because of, you know, the kind of shutdown of the community. But still, you know, came in fairly strong. So Woodfin has benefited, you know, for years compared to other towns with having a very strong tax base, usually very strong sales tax revenues. And this pages 58 through, keep going here. 63 give you good detail on all the, you know, ins and outs coming into the town. And again, at the end of this report, and this is budgetary basis, this is budget in actual. And you'll see again, the extraordinary expenditures for debris removal and then the additional revenues from the disaster recovery grants. That's the FEMA money and the cash flow for disaster loans. Overall, the net change in fund balance, you know, you see a negative 47,000. If you were to look at this before the extraordinary items, the town would have been putting a million dollars into the fund balance. So, you know, good, before the hurricane, but, you know, obviously that has impacted the town. But the town had strong cash flow and cash reserves. So, you know, Woodfin's in great shape. Then we have the supplemental or capital schedule for the Blue Way Capital Project Fund. That was pretty strong capital outlays this year, 2.5 million for the whitewater wave in Riverside Park, which I know took on some damage. But those are still in process. And there's our Stormwater Utility Fund, budgetary basis. And you see bottom line on it, it put almost 240,000 of income into the town. And after this section, I just want to point out, these two schedules related to taxes, the second one shows an incredible collection rate. Your collection rate on your property and motor vehicles combined is 99.59%, very, very strong. And then after this section is our compliance section. So we had three compliance reports that we issued, the Yellow Book Report, which talks about, you know, looking at laws and regulations. And we had no findings in general with what's called the Yellow Book. Then we get into the specifics of the federal single audit and the state's single audit. And in neither one of these two single audits, there were no findings. Everything followed perfectly with the compliance supplements and the procedures we were to follow. Again, I don't anticipate any changes. The summary, here's the summary pages of the federal and state single audits. I'll be adding a little section about the dual dating when I know that date. And this just tells you the program we audited was the Department of Homeland Security Disaster Grant, Public Assistance for Presidentially Declared Disasters. And then on the state side, we audited, it's the Department of the State Treasurer, Cash Flow Loans for Disaster. And again, no findings in any of these. And the final page of the report gives you what's called the CIFA schedule, schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards. And it just lays out what was spent and then summarizes the two state loans at the bottom, which I think you have to pay a dollar on those on their anniversary date. And then they follow a more, you know, pronounced payback schedule. So there is your 2025 audit of the town of Woodfin. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it. How smoothly everything runs every year.
All right.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that. Next, the town manager's report. Shannon Tuck.
Escape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next report, beginning with an update on our Hailing Recovery Process, specifically regarding our FEMA public assistance projects. We've had a follow-up meeting with the FEMA PDMGs plus our engineers. We thought it was important to get the two bodies or the two parties together to kind of iron out where we, what the status of our stormwater and roads applications are. And the good news is there was some agreement on the source of costs that could be used. And also FEMA did agree to attend a reinspection to reassess the damage inventory for roads and stormwater. And that reinspection is actually scheduled for tomorrow. Our project and facilities director, Adrian Eisenhower, and myself both will be attending along with one of our engineers and the FEMA staff. The Silverline Park Invitation for Bids is posted. Just as a reminder, the deadline is December 22nd. The Riverside Park FEMA funding is obligated. It is a relatively small amount of money though, so it's not super exciting, but that is the last step before we actually receive the funds. And all the debris invoices have been submitted, but the reimbursement has been paused due to some questions around tipping fees and how they are tracked and documented. And so this is nothing that the town, this is really a question that has to be worked out between FEMA and the state-approved contractors. This isn't anything that we have a role in, except to just stand by and wait for that to get figured out. And then eventually, those funds should come to the town.
Have we had any bids received yet?
No, not yet. But it's, it always surprises me, they always seem to submit on the very last day. I do not know why, but it always seems to come in on the last day. One thing that has been kind of troubling me has been the status of our ball fields. We've made three attempts to reseed, with the last attempt being pretty significant. When the first two attempts failed, the contractor agreed to, you know, take more extraordinary measures. They did a fine screening of the surface because it is sort of hard-packed in areas. And after the debris operation, we did have a fair amount of rock and larger chunks of wood. And so they did a fine screening. Then they came in with some fill dirt to kind of have a better material for seed germination. And then they did hydro seeding with a tackifier and were still not getting the best results. This is the best so far and it's been pretty dry. That may have something to do with it. But I am a little concerned that the fields may not be ready in time for the spring. Yes, ma'am?
Has the soil been tested? Because I'm concerned of what was placed on there when they brought all the debris and just kind of deposited and then they take it away and you smooth it out.
Yeah.
And whether or not the soil could be contaminated. I know you said they brought additional soil in, but where did they get that soil from?
It has to be, for them to bring in topsoil, it has to be clean material. So they can't bring in just sort of spoiled material. It has to be clean fill. I don't believe they tested the soils because this was all vegetated debris. So none of the construction debris would have been stored here. That was stored at a different location.
So what was stored here?
Just woody debris.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, but I do understand that, that even as waste material, as they scoop up alongside the riverbanks and they're scooping up soil that in past floods may have contained fuel, like in 2004. And all of that settles down into the riverbed and then it comes up and then it gets kicked around and pushed out to the sides. Whether or not that could be an issue, because even with the dryness, there should have been some because we had enough rain for it to, some areas to at least germinate.
And there is some germination happening, particularly on the edges. The center is really bare.
Seemed like testing it before we spend more money on.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I will be happy to, first, I'll confirm whether or not testing was done. And if not, then we'll see what it will take to get some testing done.
Shannon, have they, has anyone offered any possible explanations? Typical or atypical, for example?
Both. I mean, it's, I think their biggest concern, well, initially with the first two attempts, it was just a broadcast seed with some straw. And, you know, in Western North Carolina, this time of year, turkeys are probably, like turkeys and birds will come in, they'll eat all of the grass seed. So that was one concern, which is one of the reasons they decided to use the hydro seeding with the tackifier this time because it's, it's kind of makes it stick better and, you know, keeps it less susceptible to being poached by the wildlife. So with this most recent attempt, I don't know that there's any strong theories. I was trying to give it some time and give it some rain to really assess it. This photo was taken today, so that's the current condition. So I'll be reaching out to our... So I'll be reaching out to our contractors next. But I think it's going to be hard to get the debris contractors to do anything more at this stage, because they have, you know, made a good faith attempt. But I will talk to them about it. Regarding long-term recovery, Buncombe County is reviewing and hopefully approving tonight, same night as our meeting, the full Helene Recovery Plan. And the local municipalities are looking to adopt their, that plan or affirm that plan in the following months. So we have it scheduled currently for December 16th, which is the next town council meeting. We have also been busy with a number of grants. We've submitted two fairly significant grants, HMGP and DRMF grants, for an engineering study to address the flash flooding on Weaverville Road. These grants are, it's two different pots of money, but the request is the same. So if we get both, then we would have to turn one down. So the ask is the same. So this is just our way of trying to hedge our, the chances of us getting funding of some kind to begin this study. We also submitted an OSBM grant for the cost related to the repair of the Cofford Dam. That's a special pot of funding to help address unmet needs as a result of the hurricane. So FEMA would not fund the repair to the Cofford Dam. So that was one cost that we incurred. So we've submitted that to FEMA.
What was that? Somehow having my head around 200,000?
Yeah, 220, I must say it's 224 or something in that territory.
Which is pretty good.
Yeah. I would like to try to submit for two more OSBM grants. One for the small roadslides, landslides that we had above some of our roads, also denied by FEMA, and for some guardrails. I believe I can get the necessary information, these, these grants are due this Friday. I believe I can get the slides done. I think I have the information or I'll be able to get the information I need to submit. I am not so sure about the guardrails, because the proposal from the engineer to study is going to take too long. And he said the studies, even though you may have had a lot of blowdown, determining where a, where guardrail is appropriate has, is a number of different factors. It's the geometry of the road, it's the slope, it's the degree of the slope and the, the amount of space for a guardrail. So all of those things, he's like, not all roads are good candidates. And so it requires some study and investigation. So we don't know yet where the guardrail should go or how much guardrail would be appropriate.
Are there more than Sunny Ridge and Leisure Mountain that you're considering?
Those are the two main ones. There may have been a third road or a little segment on the third road. Now, we have other places throughout town where we think guardrails may be warranted and we may also want to study. But that would not be an unmet hurricane need. So that would not be included. And then lastly, we are studying our eligibility for some funding through Project Blueprint, which is focused on flood mitigation. We have flood mitigation in Riverside Park. The challenge, and and we also have unmet need, funding need. So we do still have a gap, or we're anticipating that there will be a gap for Riverside Park. Even with the funding success that we've had, the challenge is when you get so many grants in the pot, they are, some of them are very general. It'll just say, we are providing X amount of funding for the, this park that includes picnic amenities, restrooms, walking trails, et cetera. And it'll kind of list the different kinds of amenities. You cannot double dip when you use grant funding. So if one grant is funding flood mitigation, then you can apply for another grant to fund flood mitigation. We think that there will be a way for us to say that even though this grant might be funding flood mitigation, it's only funding a little portion of flood mitigation, because a lot of this money is being used for all of these other things. So we think there's a way that we could possibly tease these apart to be able to say, we still have a funding need of X amount of dollars for flood mitigation, which should hopefully make us eligible for Project Blueprint. Yes, sir.
On the third bullet, what kind of dollar amount would, might those grants be to study flash flooding on Weaverville Road? Sorry, I just.
I should know.
Tell me tomorrow.
I can, yeah, I can forward you a copy of the grant.
I mean, that's great. I hope those come through, because that's really.
Yeah.
Really needed. It's been so long. Okay, thank you.
I want to say it's in the like $300,000 range. All right, moving on. So that's the Helene Recovery Update. Moving on to other town updates in the Administration Department. We've had four contracts come in in the last 30 days. One for NeoGov of 7,000 or just under $7,200 for the Power DMS software. This is not being funded from General Fund. This is the grant that the Police Department received, the $183,000 grant for accreditation. So this is being funded out of that grant money. We also have a $17,260 contract with Russell Allen Construction. This is for the bath and kitchenette remodel in the Public Works Department. A very small grant for just over $1,000 with TSA for Internet access points. We've been having some spotty Internet connectivity lately. And when we asked TSA to investigate it, they felt like this was part of the problem. And it was just past replacement date. So we went ahead and authorized those improvements. And then lastly, we have finalized the agreement with Asheville Greenworks for our river cleanup work. This, they were one of our recipients for the Community Partner Grant Program. So this money has already been accounted for and we've just got the agreement finalized now. Some other activity in the, yes, sir.
So TextMyGov, you're down to 2,500. I think you started maybe this broad net.
Yeah, really large number. And we were able to redefine the boundary using the town limits. And so that final number is somewhere around 2,500 or 2,500 people.
Have opted in.
That have opted in, or they're automatically opted in. Now, we anticipate, this number is never static.
Right.
So we anticipate more people will opt out, some new people might opt in. So that number is always going to be fluctuating. I expect that as we send announcements, there will always be the line at the bottom that says, text STOP to be unsubscribed from this list. So I imagine that as we send more announcements, we'll get more people to opt out. However, you know, so what that final number is, I'm not really sure. But I would say it's probably going to settle somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500.
And this is primarily for emergency notifications?
Yes.
Is it possible that this number, 2,500, gives you like 10 notifications a year?
It's 20, approximately 20 a year. So, yeah, we have an allowance of 50,000 texts. So with 2,500 subscribers, that would be about 20 messages. So this will not take the place of social media. You know, we're putting stuff out on social media every, almost every day. So this is really reserved for emergency alerts or messages of broad public interest. So we used it shortly after it was launched. We used it to remind everybody to go vote in our most recent election. So things of that nature is what TextMyGov is going to be limited to.
Thank you.
The Helene Anniversary Newsletter has been mailed. We actually mailed it a while ago, so everybody should have received it by now. It's just that it went out after my last update. So it's, even though it's been almost a month. There's been a lot of grant writing, as I've mentioned. That's kept many of us in the Administration Division busy. And then we're also planning our new council member orientation and our annual retreat. Moving on, in the Planning and Stormwater Divisions, Planning Department's mostly focused and occupied with the code update. So we've completed the policy focus area work with our consultants, which is the, the leading step into code diagnosis. We are planning a consultant visit for the first week of December, and that's going to be a two-day visit. So they're going to meet with the PBOA, we're going to have some staff work sessions, and they're also going to meet with the Steering Committee. So there's going to be a lot that happens in that next consultant visit. For stormwater, they continue to work on permit closeout and annual inspection. This is probably going to be the update for many more months now. This, this is what is occupying most of the time. We did send out an informational letter. This is one in addition to one that I referenced several months ago. This one specifically is to help meet the stormwater requirements of our MS4 permit. And then flood permit review and tracking continues. We're still in a little bit of a transition, taking over that responsibility for Buncombe County. Like stormwater, we have accepted to transition all of the permits that are open, even though Buncombe County may have been the party to issue it. So we are working with Buncombe County to close out the permits that they issued. In Public Works and Facilities, we completed the bulky item, the free bulky item collection. We will do another one in the spring. So just to remind everybody, we do one week in the fall and one week in the spring. And then for the rest of the year, there's a small fee. Leaf pickup is continuing, but the deadline is December 8th. So we did put out a notice on social media reminding residents, please remember, get all of your leaves out by December 8th if you want them collected by the town. The paving work that we had budgeted in front of the Public Works facility is complete. And there's a picture of it. So it's, it has made, it's a huge difference compared to what it was. It was such a bumpy entry and now it's nice and smooth. So that's, that's a big improvement. And then, of course, I mentioned already, the renovation of the bathroom and kitchen is, is in the works. Right now, we're, the contractors are working on obtaining the permits for the work. In the Police Department, the Shop With a Cop Initiative has, has kind of been announced. And we are starting to get some donations, which is great. Our chief is hoping to collect more than $1,500. She's, she's hoping to get at least $2,200. So if you know anybody who is so inclined to donate to this worthy cause, you know, please feel free to share that.
Is that on social media for actually making a donation or do you contact the chief?
So the chief has done some separate appeals. So she helped submit one through the Woodfin Business Association. I think she, there's been some discussion at the elementary school. And I think there has been some other advocacy work that the, the police has done. They may have posted something on their Facebook page. I have not checked that to verify. We haven't posted anything on our.
So for example, individual wants to make a donation, they contact the chief?
Oh, no, they can contact the town. You can even donate through the town's website, if that's what people like to do. Was there another question?
So there is, under the donate, there's an option for shop with a cop?
Don't think it's called shop with a cop. Jean, did we take the donate button off or is it still there? Still on there? I think it's just Police Department. And that would, that's the only program that they're really seeking donations for at this time. The, the Police Department received another grant, the North, through the North Carolina League of Municipalities. It's, it's an annual grant that is posted every year. It's just kind of generally called the Public Safety Grant, covers a lot of different things. Most of this grant money will go towards some important equipment for the Police Department. But a portion of it is being set aside for an update to the town's personnel policy. And then lastly, there's been a number of officer trainings that have been completed. And we hope that as we become more fully staffed, that we'll be able to make more trainings available to our officers. But there's a few of what has just been accomplished here in the last 30 days. And that concludes my Town Manager Report. Be happy to answer any other questions.
So I'm on the homepage and it may be there. I'm just not seeing it as far as donating.
I think you might have to, there's a little button on the right with a little arrow. You might have to hit that to see more buttons.
Okay, well, I can.
Yeah.
Can you put a ticker across the top like you did for Helene?
Yeah, we can only do one banner at a time. So it might be time to take down the Helene banner anyway, and maybe we can put that up there.
Other questions from council? John, you're good? All right, thank you very much. Awesome. And moving to new business, Shannon is staying there because she's tackling number one, which is approval of a contract amendment, approving a change order in the amount of 118,488.50 for S20 caliber engineering and the associated budget amendment, number 2025-21.
That's right. So I'm going to kick this off. We have two different actions. One is approval of the contract. The second is approving the budget amendment that goes with this contract. So S2O or Caliber Engineering let us know a little while ago that they were quickly running out of construction mission, construction administration funds. So they have a contract with the town for construction administration to oversee the construction work for the Whitewater Wave or Taylor's Wave. We originally anticipated a 17-week construction timeline with nine visits. So had we stayed on course and had limited the number of site visits to nine, the funding would have lasted. But it, for a couple of reasons, well, obviously Helene created some new costs, but also the construction approach is not what they had originally anticipated. So it makes the construction timeline longer and it requires more inspections. And they need to be there for every concrete pore. So that's why we did not have enough funding for all of the different inspections that were going to be required. So a change order was necessary. Again, a portion of that 118,488 is for additional site visits that are required. But a chunk of it is also for costs associated with Helene. So we did have to contract with them or ask them to do some additional engineering to guarantee that the Whitewater Wave as designed or, or, you know, that it would still operate as we had originally modeled it to. And/or if it needed to be adjusted, how do we adjust it? And so they, that was some of that additional cost. So it's a pretty simple motion. I've taken a stab at putting one up there. But of course, council can phrase it however you like and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments from council?
So I think maybe I'm just not looking at the right place.
Do you need a page number?
Yeah, because I, the question is that the chart that, or the table that was placed on page 121 of the file?
There's not that many pages.
Well, if you download it on a PDF.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I don't remember. Related to this 118,000, there was a table? Oh, that's the budget amendment.
Oh, the budget amendment. And Sheri is going to go over the budget amendment.
Associated with it?
Yeah.
That, to me, doesn't total that.
It doesn't. It's, yeah. And Sheri will explain that. Yeah. Right, so right now it's just approving the contract. Sheri is going to explain why the budget amendment looks the way it is.
There you go.
So I'm going to be my typical annoying self and I apologize. Maybe I don't. The, that seems a significant amount to me. So I understand the role that storm played. Is it just like typical that? So I see additional professional services. So that's a, that's a very small portion of it. So this cost is material or is this cost?
Let me explain the budget amendment first. Maybe that'll clarify some stuff. And I agree, that's a significant change order. It close to doubles the contract. I don't know that we have a lot of choice, because there are engineers on the project and that's what they are saying it's going to cost. Budget amendment wise, we had an overage in the professional services line as that budget appears today. And if you look at your budget to actuals report that's attached in the department reports every month for, for the Parks and Recreation Capital Project Fund, you'll see that there's about $110,000 unencumbered in the professional services signed for the line item for the wave project. So if you add an additional $8,082, that gets us to the 118,000 required for me to be able to pre-audit this contract and encumber that chunk of money. That's why there's only $8,000 there. We are re-appropriating 19,000 from the design line. We had some savings in that line. And we don't anticipate a need to use the 19,000 that's left in that line item. So we're, we're taking part of the money from that line. And then 68,582 from the construction line. We have, we have currently, now, I'm going to say this within context that we're coming back to you with a planned budget amendment probably in January for construction of additional phases that have already been planned for the Riverside Park Expansion Project. But today we have plenty of money in that line. So instead of asking to reappropriate, and there's some strategic reasons for not asking to appropriate funds from the General Fund to support this change order. So we're moving 68,582 from construction and another portion of the project to the professional, to fund part of this. to the professional, to fund part of this. And then the other 79,000 is years ago when we did the initial budgeting for this. And we were figuring out what budgets to put the, the budget appropriation in. We got professional services a little too high and construction a little too low. So we have always had, if you look back at all your monthly reports, there has been a shortfall in the wave construction of 79,500. So we're shoring that up because hopefully over the next foreseeable few months, we will reach completion of that project and we needed to get that fixed. So I went ahead and did that with this budget amendment. Does that, does that make sense?
Well, no, I appreciate the, the accounting methods that are used to move things around. That part I understand. I guess I was just a little taught, you're taken aback by the sum and, or the amount and the statement that it was the preferred, the increased, what, construction preferred method of the contractor.
The construction, yeah.
And so my confusion is, is, was that not stated upfront? And now it's changing midstream? And like where is, where is their responsibility in presenting the project in their bid?
Yes, I know what you're describing. So, okay. So the best way I can describe this is what the S-2O engineers used as a benchmark for what the construction administration costs would be, were other projects where crews built the structure from two sides and met in the middle. So by having two crews working at one time, you were reducing the number of inspections needed because every time you would do a concrete pour, so that, I think it was estimated that we would need nine site visits. So every time you do a concrete pour, there's another, you know, that you're, you're actually inspecting two and pouring in two areas. But for reasons that I do not fully understand, but I will be investigating, that did not work in our case and we had to do a pour after a pour after a pour. So rather than going from two sides and working towards the middle, we had to go linearly across.
I think it was, they, they really had struggled with making these boulders match. I've been down there a couple of days where it gets down to millimeters and I think they were frustrated with, it just, it didn't always work every day.
I think so. That was, that could have been part of it. But I also think it was the bedrock, the, the heavy, hard bedrock that they encountered, that they had to kind of build it for reasons, I'm not an engineer or a contractor. So I apologize, I can't really explain it. Now, we do not expect the same kind of bedrock condition on the other side for the second half. And we, I intend to talk to the contractor and the engineer about why can't you do the two crews at a time, two at a time and meet in the middle and reduce the number of inspections for phase two? So phase one's done, right? We've already, it's, we've already blown through that budget and that, and all of the construction administration money for, for that first half. But I think we have the potential to minimize costs for the second half and reduce. And so this contract would be for a number not to exceed 118,000. I'm hoping that we can actually get it down.
So did they not do their due diligence as to what, what materials that they were, they were? But when they placed their bid, was there not some investigation as to what they were actually having to deal with?
They do.
Before they gave the bid?
They do, but they, there's only so much that you can investigate ahead of time before you. So they had done some survey work, like riverbed survey work to try to understand the rock conditions. So, but there's only so much investigation you can do when the waters, you know, flowing in the river. So they can, the data is not always perfect. And all of the contracts will always say, you know, except for these extraordinary conditions that were not possible to identify prior to work commencing. So that's what makes change, that's why we have change orders, is to be able to address these things that could not have been anticipated.
So I guess the reason why I brought it up is because it said their preferred method instead of the.
Maybe that's, that might not be the best phrasing. It, it might be the most practical method. It might not be a matter of preference.
Practical would make more sense, but preferred means the ease in which, I mean, their ease.
And I don't, yeah, and I don't want to commit to you that it is a practical necessity and not a preference until I talk to them because I do want to see that amount get reduced. I, I want to see this done in four inspections or five inspections, not nine. So that's my next conversation. But we do need to get some sort of change order. Again, this is an amount not to exceed 118,000. It, we only pay them for what they invoice us. So if they end up completing the work in five inspections, we will not be spending 118,000.
Other questions?
I'm just wondering, do you expect them to come and ask for another change?
I don't. No. I do expect this to be, this to be it for, at least for this. I don't.
Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong. For some extension of contract administration services would going to be needed because of the time, because of the storm.
Because of Helene, yeah.
And the delay that that meant. So you're going to have to have some amount of additional services that is just force majeure. We're going to, if we're going to build it, we've got to have them observe it.
But we've already done all that.
Well, well, a portion, well, a portion of what has already been exhausted was because of Helene. So that is part of why we don't have all of the money available for, for phase two.
If this were only the first, if this was the first one, I wouldn't be asking. But this is not the first one. So I felt that it's.
I think this is the first one for S-2O.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. But we've had, and, and that's really big contracts like that is sort of how these go.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the change order request in the amount of 188,488 for Caliber Engineering Incorporated, S-2O, to cover expenses related to Hurricane Helene and alternative construction methods.
Is there a second?
Second.
Without further discussion, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed? No? Council member, did you vote?
I'd say yes.
Okay, thank you. It's five yeses. All right, do the budget amendment next. Okay.
I don't know if there's any more discussion that.
You're moving, you're moving money around and it sounds reasonable for the reason you're doing it.
Yeah, but my attempt was to try to fund this change within the existing budget of the capital project. You know, everyone is aware that we received a couple of grants and we have the passive rec grant for consideration at the county commission meeting tonight. That will require a budget amendment to appropriate the revenues that we hopefully will have approved in January and additional expenses related to the latter phases of Riverside Park Expansion Project. So we'll be coming back to you for consideration of that amendment and to shore up what we hope will be finalization of that entire project in January. But this gets us to completion of the wave.
In this line, this will result in a net increase of no dollars in the appropriation of the project fund?
Yes, because we're moving money from other already appropriated budgets within that fund.
Okay, all right. Are there questions from council about this? Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 2025-021 to amend the town of Woodfin's fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget for the Parks Capital Project Fund 41 and find that it is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan and the financial needs of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you all.
All right, next on new business number two, a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 2025-23, which is a request to rezone quarter acre property from community shopping, R7 residential for a property located at One View Street. The applicant is Rob Weed on behalf of property owner RHW Investments LLC. Mr. Ricky Hurley.
Thank you, sir, for the introduction, mayor. I'll just go ahead, I'll try to move quick tonight. I know we're running long. So this property is a way of orientation in town. It's just east on Elk Mountain Road, back in behind where Woodfin Water, back in that neighborhood. So this is just a zoning map that would get recorded with the ordinance. I'll move to the colored one here for you. So the CS is to the left and that actually kind of goes all the way back to the interchange of Future 26 and Elk Mountain Road, kind of to the west northwest. And then you have the R7, which is kind of to the east. There's actually a large manufactured home park immediately to the south. You'll see here in this area. For the future land use map, you'll notice some changes here. There's a lot of red here on the left-hand side of that screen. The future land use map shows this area as residential one. So we have a large neighborhood, for some reason, many years ago was zoned commercial. And so the zoning actually doesn't fit the land use, actually. We want to kind of, we, in the land use plan, we want to kind of shrink that up and get that closer to the interchange and not actually create some non-conforming situations with the zoning code. However, we can't just go in arbitrarily and rezone right now with Senate Bill 382, downzone commercial. So we need a property owner's application. So we have one tonight to rezone a small area of community shopping to R7. So it'll be a one notch in the belt here and to allow the construction of a single family home. Excuse me here. We had received actually some complaints on this property prior with an abandoned house that was removed almost two months ago. So that, we got some positive feedback from the neighborhood when that occurred. And here's just a snippet from the land use plan about residential one. It's small scale, single family homes, manufactured housing, some existing manufactured housing. That is all in this area. As you can see, we have an older legacy mobile home park. We have some smaller apartments scattered out and a lot of just detached, single family homes. So this zoning would actually fit the area better. With that said, we actually have not heard any comments from the neighborhood. A couple of people were pleased with the zoning to R7. With that, I'll just go through the consideration real quickly. It will actually match the existing development pattern. Our land use plan, the future land use map calls it to be residential one. So R7 actually matches that. And would actually reduce the potential of disruptive uses with the community shopping by rezoning to R7. So it would actually make it more compatible. And additionally, our planning board reviewed this on October 7th and it was unanimous vote, six to zero. And the staff also concurs with the planning board adjustment with that recommendation. I know I'm moving quickly, but it was pretty straightforward. Do y'all have any questions right here before we open the public hearing?
This one looks like it's a good decision, good business decision for the town. Seems to be.
All right.
Are there any questions from council? If not, we will open the hearing at 6:04 PM, public hearing. No one signed up to speak, but is there anyone in the audience that has a strong opinion on this, would like to address council about this property? All right, I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:05 and ask council, is there any more discussion, any questions you have? If not, is there a motion? Phil, Mr. Cohen?
I move to approve the rezoning of 0.23 acres from community shopping to R7 Residential District, as shown on Exhibit A, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the town of Woodfin Comprehensive Plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, uses the future land use map to guide development decisions. Two, promotes fiscal responsibility by encouraging growth in areas with existing services over other areas and balances the supply of land for housing.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Great, five to zero. Thank you very much.
All right.
The next one, Mr. Hurley, you're going to stay up. It's a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 2025-24, a request to revise the approved Exhibit C site plan and Exhibit D project conditions associated with the 89.7 acre parcel, parcel conditionally zoned mountain village located on Goodman Road. The applicant is Teresa Carroll on behalf of the property owner Charter Mountain Properties, one of our favorites. Mr. Hurley.
All right, thank you for the introduction again, mayor. This one looks really big, but actually the essence is, this last line here is to reduce the required or self-imposed setback in the conditional zoning from 25 feet to 10. If you'll recall, mountain village, the district standalone has a zero front setback, a zero rear, zero sides, zero minimum lot size, zero lot width. So it's a very flexible zoning district. And so this was a self-imposed condition. Again, here's the zoning map that we record. You see it striped, no change to the zoning map here at all. I'll move to a colored one for you just to show there's a lot happening in this area. I think everybody's aware, we have another rezoning request to the immediate east that we don't have tonight. MSD is to the south and then we have the county, you know, their training center and the solar farm on the old landfill to the northwest. As far as the land use map, there's no change needed here either. That light tan is the residential one classification. Mountain Village kind of fits in as well with residential one. The lighter tan is the residential two, which is actually lower density. And that's kind of a more steeper slope areas, but that's the case here. Again, just a snippet from residential one, you know, again, small scale, single family duplexes. If you recall the project, I'll skip here ahead, spoiler alert. There were some twin, I call them twin homes, duplex style down the southern half and a lot of detached, single family homes scattered throughout the project. This is the same layout as is currently approved. Again, the only change is to the one condition on the front setback reduction. Yes, sir.
What, this is going to, in figure of speech, generate more open space?
I, I think as far as the lot configurations, what I've seen, the plan is essentially the same. I think it may incidentally help with some grading because the homes could be a little bit closer to the slope, potentially the top of the ridge. I think it was more for flexibility in the design of a builder that Ms. Carroll has, is now working with. She may be able to answer a question if you want a little bit more about that.
Ricky, what, in your professional opinion, is there a downside to this? What risk, what risk does this bring to the, to Woodfin? Any, in your opinion?
As far as anything would do with parking, the proposal, what was told to me, their plan to introduce garages.
That wasn't in the original plan?
That was the thing. And I think it's the product that they're seeing as selling is includes garages. So typically people should park in their garage. I sometimes have extra stuff in my garage. The only thing would be a downfall if you had a very short stubby, let's say 10-foot deep driveway apron that somebody might be able to park in that. And that could introduce potentially on-street parking. That would be about the only downside.
So I appreciate that question because that is, we do not allow parking in our right of way unless it is specifically, you know, signed for parking. So we don't want cars parked in the driveway when that portion of the driveway is in our road.
When there's a garage in front of it especially.
Right. So, so that is, I would say that is one drawback is that it's not a great condition. Because there will always be a temptation by some property owners to not park in their garage and park in the driveway in front of the garage, which means that that car could be hanging up into the right of way somewhere. Now, you see that condition all over, everywhere. You know, it's, it's common in old neighborhoods, it's common in new neighborhoods. But for a few reasons, it's not.
Do you want to, should we let Teresa address it or do you want to help?
I think.
One question.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of questions.
Okay, we'll come to you. Go ahead, Betsy.
You, you go ahead. What does this configuration do with our requirement for the tree planting in the front of the yard? Because 10-foot setback from street to house does not allow a mature tree to grow, the root system. So where does that fall in with this, this plan?
And I guess sidewalks kind of goes along with that.
Well, and if you remember this one, no sidewalks because they're going to do walking trails.
That's what I was thinking. I wanted to confirm that that was true.
That hasn't changed, right?
Okay. The walking trails have not, is that like mandering through the yards in the back or is that just?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So what does that do with our tree requirement? So what does that do with our tree requirement for the front? Because all I'm seeing is a wall of homes with no greenage.
Yeah. So I would say our average spacing for tree plants every 40 linear feet. So typically what we expect is these trees would probably fall between the homes. We can ask the applicant what the plan is a little bit further about the details of tree planting. But that's what I'm anticipating is trees to go in that kind of in the lot spacing in between where there's the house and there's going to be side setbacks.
How much setback is that between the homes? Is that on the property line or is that within?
They're, they're, they're five feet off the side. So they would have like a little bit of a corner.
So there's, that's not enough room for a mature tree either for root system?
So we don't, we don't have the plans right now for the individual house plans.
Yep.
But when they submit for their different applications for, you know, they may do a stretch of road and say they're going to build these six houses and they'll do individual, single family home plans that will need to show where the trees are going. And the requirement is one tree for every 40 linear feet, but they don't have to be spaced 40 feet on the center. So they, they can be, you know, 60, 70 feet apart, but no tighter than 15 feet. So where you have more space, depending on the design and position of the home, you may have more trees.
And when they start doing that, Shannon and Ricky, do you, I mean, this is in a forest, basically, a wood, heavily wooded area. A lot of trees are going to come down.
And that's why I'm bringing this up.
Council members' concern is valid. But do we want to have, we do want to let the applicant speak? Is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Yeah, and as Chris is coming up, I'll just make a quick clarification that the only landscape requirement for this project is street trees. I believe that's what Harry, Ricky, it's just street trees.
I know that, but she also committed to a large open space area as well. Yeah. Yeah, but as far as.
But those aren't the, the, there's undeveloped open space that will be not impacted by grading. So where you have woods, we would anticipate those trees to remain undisturbed and not impacted. But other sort of community amenity areas wouldn't have a tree requirement. So the only actual landscaping that must be installed.
Okay, so.
Okay, I'll step out.
We know who you are, we don't know who he is. Would you all introduce yourselves?
Yeah, Teresa Carroll.
Eric Otchison, Truage Group, engineer.
Okay, you are the applicant tonight. So Teresa, you hear the concerns, talk to us, please.
Yeah, okay, so I guess, you know, talking about it is a forest, it is a forest. I think we are only utilizing or clearing about 30% of the land, is that correct? Something along those lines?
Yeah, we've attempted to reduce the disturbed area to the extent possible. Obviously, the road corridor is going to be pretty impactful work. The whole purpose of reducing front setbacks is, is not to push all the buildings up to the road. You can see just based on like the geometry of the phase one road, how it kind of snakes its way up the ridge. It's fairly steep, there's units that are kind of tucked on the inside of curves and the outside of curves, the way the lot lines kind of land. We just want some flexibility to be able to program a lot in a way that achieves like what, what the market's asking for. A lot of times they want a garage, you know, we would like to provide, you know, parking between the garage and the road to the extent possible.
You won't be able to do that with this?
Well, it's not that like, not every single lot is going to be the same here, right? Like it's, it's going to be a wide variety of products. Some, some lots will have, you know, a 10 foot setback with a two-car garage. Some lots will have 25 foot setback with a two-car garage. Some lots will have a 25 foot setback with a one-car garage. I mean, it's just going, it's going to be varying, very.
That's a clarification that I hadn't thought of, so it won't be every lot going to 10 feet?
No, no, absolutely not.
Excuse me, Shannon, do, do towns ever set a limit? Like if you want to do that, you, you can only do 10 of the houses that way or?
I mean, not typically, typically it's, it's a minimum setback.
I understand. You know, we're, we're big, we have been big fans of this project. But it is in a heavily wooded area right close to the river. So don't take these questions personally, I'm a little concerned.
No, we're not very sensitive to all of that.
And it seems like the, it's, hmm, are you all just changing your mind as you're learning more about the marketplace and, and the site itself? Is that what we're seeing?
The site is challenging. It's, it's rolling topography. I mean, we're not just talking a track community where it's flat. It's our goal not to do or to do the least amount of grading possible.
Couple of us have hiked in there and it is, it's an interesting property.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's just going to be, like Eric said, every home will be a little different, you know?
So my concern is because the neighborhood that's behind my house, they have, it's probably 10 feet from the street. It may be 15, Ricky, do you have any idea?
Those have to be R seven, so I think that's 20. It's, it's.
What are we talking about now? I'm sorry.
It doesn't project.
Oh, another project.
Let's talk about this project.
And so it's just a wall of like, i- it's almost like it's an alley. There's no, there's just no green. It's just, and that's where my, my question, it, that's what it's rooted in is my concern for, we're trying to create a, a community that is, wants to stay. We, that, that set roots here and when it is kind of like, green is not included, people don't tend to stay. I, I guess that's what's driving.
Let me try to paint a little bit of a picture. You know, with 90 acres, we have about three and a half units per acre, which, you know, really I think we're allowed seven units per acre by the current, you know, ordinance. So we're actually utilizing about 50% of the land that you all would allow us to use. One of the reasons is this, what you're, exactly what you're saying, we're trying to create green space. The other reason is we have a very rolling topography. So the land sort of commands what we're doing, I think. And Eric has worked tirelessly to design something that works for us without coming in and mass grading the whole property and do exactly what you're talking about. So there will be more trees in the rear than there are in the front because we're trying to get the houses as close to the road because it's steep. So we, you know, the further you push the house back, the more it costs to build it. And these are budget friendly homes, so that's our goal.
And we also, go ahead, Phil, go ahead, please.
This just sounds to me like it gives you flexibility where you need it without, without compromising.
Yeah, I mean, and technically it's, it was zero and we came in with 25 feet from the road and now we're coming back with 10. So I think we're well within what you allow, you know?
On the point of the street trees, very sensitive to that topic. I deal with street trees all the time. And I think the goal would be to, you know, not really have like more than one or two homes in a row that are up against the right of way like that. So that, you know, you have, you might have one up against it and then the next one recessed further. So there's an opportunity for two trees in the front yard of, of that recessed home. Would be kind of the goal of, of programming some of those lots. And just to give an example of a couple of lots where like pushing the, the house to the, to the road as close as you can is like extremely necessary is like the first one after you come over the top and you're coming down the road very steep. You're pinched between the road and storm pond down below. And it's a two to one slope with the bench and all this other stuff. So the further we can push it to the road, the less like foundation wall and stem wall there's going to be to, to meet the, the square footage of the footprint requirement to make that a feasible lot. And I think also in terms of this, this first phase, the thing that's like really hard to visualize just looking at this plan is how much utility work is required to get infrastructure into phase one and to be set up to, to serve future phases? And we're talking about a sewer extension basically from the MSD plant up Riverside Drive through the property and then an extension of the water system from the landfill down here. Ultimately, both of those utility services would serve both this property and if anything ever happens on, on the neighboring property, it's, it's providing the, the utility access to allow the development of those properties. Extremely costly, it's even way more costly now than it was five years ago or five years before that. And that's, you know, that's one of the things to keep in mind about this project is it's, it's kind of been in motion since like 20, I was, I started getting involved in 2018 and it goes back further than that in, in different iterations.
Don't get us wrong, we have been big fans of this project. Let me ask Ricky, let me ask Ricky a question. Ricky, if we approve this and as they get into presenting phases, if, for lack of a better term, if you saw that way too many were right up on the street, you have the ability, you and Shannon have the ability to say, you know, this is, this isn't what council intended. You have the ability to govern some of that or?
Well, the intent is what's in the ordinance, but what we would do is double check to make sure, because we're starting to get more cooperation, not say cooperation, but more working together with the county on finals for single family homes. So we're starting to get those requests, we're getting that kind of synergy, getting that. So we could go through the phases as we final out each phase for the builder. We could check before we release the CO and the sureties to make sure that the landscaping that is required, the street trees are in appropriate locations and that we don't have a tree crammed in, you know, in a, a three by three pot. And we could. It has to be built at that point, which is actually usually see the trees show up last would actually be better than having them tracked all over and.
But that would allow him to.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so.
But that would allow him, let's say a phase, if they weren't happy about it, it would allow them to say, look, on this next phase, you're going to have to do a little bit differently, right?
No, no, I get that, but so if you move the houses up, the behind, is that is going to be untouched? Or are you saying that that is for utilities? I was a little confused what you were meaning by the neighboring project and about sharing of utility lines.
The water is going to connect through that first main road that goes to the circular piece of the property over there. And eventually it will tie into the water system for that other project. Whenever it happens to create a sustained pressure loop for, for the water to, to keep the pressures up to support future phases development with, with high pressures. And it works with pressures currently, but you know, to, to sustain higher pressures is going to provide a higher level of service and, and response ability for, for emergency departments. In terms of, you know, pushing the houses closer to the road affecting the rears of the lots, you know, by, by the, by the virtue of pushing them up there, you're, you're going to have the disturbance kind of closer into the building than, than it would be if you had to push out some fill to create, you know, a, a, a crawl space condition or, or a walkout basin or something like that. Honestly, the most impactful part of this project that's not like fully represented on, on this plan is, is what stormwater ordinance is, is impacting this project specifically with a three acre maximum drainage area for water quality treatment. You can just see is looking at the topography, how much offsite drainage comes through this project. And so we ended up with, I think this first phase has something like 10 stormwater ponds. Many of them serve, you know, future phases because the only place you can locate these ponds is in, in the draws between the ridges. It's, it's kind of too steep otherwise. So, you know, we, we would like to have had a product that disturbed much less of that draw area in between the, the ridge lines, but in order to meet ordinance requirements as well as that there's some DOT pipes that we're, we're draining to that cross under Riverside Drive, we had to really buff up the, the stormwater measures and that, that actually impacts a good deal of the woods through there. But that also is where we're creating the trails and all that other stuff, using the embankments and, and the, the berms around the ponds. But the actual corridor of the, the road, that the goal would be, you know, we've got a 45 foot right of way and then, you know, you might have hopefully like 10, 15 feet to the building face, another 30 feet of building. And then you might not go 10 feet past that before you hit the, the, the maintained tree line. So most of these houses, you know, will have still like 40 or 50 feet of woods at least behind the, the developed area of the lot. So each, each lot will have a good amount of preserved open space in addition to the, the untouched space that's in the, the actual dedicated open space that also has like the stormwater measures and trail system.
So you just said stormwater. Is that part of the open space or is that?
It is within the open space.
How much of that is, how, what is that percentage? Like what, what do you envision that being of the percentage that has been set aside? Like are we talking 10% or are we talking 70%?
Maybe 20% at most.
So all that area would have to be cleared?
And that is all based on your ordinances. We would actually like to clear less. And I think, didn't the ordinance just jump from one storm pond per nine acres to one pond per three acres? Or what was it prior to this project?
Prior to this project, it was regulated by Bunkin County and it would have, well, this would still be a high density project, but there's no limit to the maximum amount of drainage that you can drain to a stormwater control measure. An example of what we're doing out here are all going to be rain gardens by retentions, which you have infiltration media, underdrain system, a type of ponds that is a much more efficient total drainage area to, to footprint of the measure would be something like a wet pond where you have like a permanent pool and then you have some staging volumes that you can manage there. So like, there, there is a world where like we could have possibly in both of these two draws that, that are north and south of the first main road, we might could have accomplished those in just one pond each instead of, you know, three or four ponds each. So.
The volume would be the same.
What's that?
The volume, instead of it being like a 20 by 20 pond, it would end up being a 30 by 60 pond.
It's a lot more complicated.
You can bring in underground drainage and that type of thing, right Eric?
Yeah, there's underground drainage. In a wet pond, you can, you can stage, sort of fire retention cell rain garden, you can only stage about a foot to a foot and a half of, you know, typical design volume. Where in a wet pond, there is no requirement for how high, it can, it's, it's based on the actual surface area of the pond to let this stuff settle out and, and cheat all the nutrients and whatnot. So it, it's not, it's not like an apples to apples comparison. There's, there's advantages and drawbacks to all the different types of measures that you have available. But something like a wet pond, you generally don't want anything less than three acres because it, it's not able to replenish, you know, permanent water in, 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 in permanent pool in like dry, dry spells and stuff like that. You might get like a rain that then fills it up half, halfway again. Whereas if you had like five, 10 acres or more, you know, a rain event is going to replenish a lot more of that water that is also then soaking into the ground or flushing like current water first.
Ricky, our planning board, did they raise any serious concerns or concerns?
No, they didn't get into that. I think they realized that Mountain Village has a zero front setback. And so this was a voluntary from 25 to 10, so that's one thing. And then the, all of the conditions, we've mentioned, there's 25 acres of open space that's not supposed to be disturbed. And then they're limited to 39 acres or 43 and a half percent grading limit max. So the open space, there should be at least 25 acres untouched green space. So that, that's a current condition that's maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
And just to be clear, like nothing about this plan is changing other than the front setbacks, which should help with, you know, pulling the disturbed areas in closer to the road corridor ultimately.
Council members, are there more questions? If there aren't any other questions, the staff supports approval of this. If there are no other questions, we'll open the public hearing. Open this public hearing at 6:28 PM. And both of you, thank you. Thank you for being prepared. No one signed up for the public hearing, but on the chances, is there any member of the public that would like to speak? We'll give you that chance. If not, we'll close this public hearing at 6:29 and a half.
And like I said, and just as FYI, we did not get any phone calls or emails regarding the request. We've done notifications twice. I picked the sign up one time, reposted this, you know, for this meeting. So people didn't get fatigue of seeing the same sign.
How many mailings? How many people were, how many people are impacted?
I'll have to look.
Is that just Goodman Road?
Say again.
Or is that just Goodman Road? And the only people that were contacted?
I, everybody adjacent, I think I mailed about 15 notifications.
So just.
There are some parcels on the north side.
Yeah, there's, you have a large undeveloped tract to the east and you have a large developed to the west. I did actually speak to a neighbor on Goodman Road and his, their concern was, is the layout changing? Is the road coming onto Goodman? I said, no, they said, I'm okay. So I think traffic on Goodman was their primary concern. Like I said, they did vote six to zero to recommend the request and staff concurred with them. And I will get over to a suggested motion and stop talking.
If there are no other questions or discussion, which we perfectly capable of continuing, wants it? Is there a motion? Is there a motion from council?
Yep. I move to approve the modification of the conditional zoning of 89.7 acres as shown on Exhibits A and E for the Mountain Village conditional zone, subject to the conditions identified. identified in exhibit D, project conditions and subject. And we have not added any additional conditions and find the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan and meets the development of the community in that the request. Myself into uses the future land use map for guide development decisions and promotes an integrated mix of housing types and affordability options. Improves basic infrastructure needed to support current residents and sustainable growth while promoting fiscal responsibility by encouraging growth in areas with existing services over other areas. And works with the developers to incorporate income restricted housing into new residential developments, dedicates public spaces within the new master plan developments, makes government decision making accessible and transparent to all residents.
Awesome job, sir. Is there a second? Short second? All in favor, please say yes. All opposed, say no.
No, I hope you prove me wrong.
Okay, we had four one approval. Thank you for being here tonight and for answering our questions. We're doing our jobs. Okay. We have one last item under new business. It's a discussion about establishing a unique zip code for the town of Woodfin. Vice Mayor Urban and Councilmember Young are going to lead that discussion.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, okay. Yeah. I mean, I want to talk to you when you talk. Okay. So we are very interested in improving the understanding of Woodfin as Woodfin. And we understand that in order for community to know what community is, you, your address is, you know, it is the, if you're writing on an envelope every day that you live in Asheville, North Carolina 28804, everyone believes they live in Asheville and it does not allow Woodfin to be its own entity. And so the communications group has been investigating the feasibility of trying to petition the postal service to give us our own zip code. And so that is what has driven this, this request. Betsy's a much better talker than I am, so she can, she can add to it.
I'll just add a bit to it. You saw the article in Mountain Express where there is confusion over who's in Woodfin, who's not. That sets out perfectly some of the problems. I know some of the folks who were canvassing for the election not long ago talked to people who said, oh, I don't know I live in Woodfin. I didn't know I could vote here. And we also have found out that there is a precedent set for this, and that's in Mills River, where they made a request for a unique zip code and a post office were awarded a unique zip code and that happened in 2007.
Does that mean, Betsy, that you can get a zip, unique zip code without having a post office?
Yes, sir. Yes, they did that in Mills River.
Yeah. Grace Post Office has about a dozen zips going in there.
Yeah. Yeah. So we feel like that this is, is a step toward building community, which is what we have all struggled to do here and want to continue to try to do it and have us be identified by a unique zip code. And we wanted to bring it before everyone here to make sure that that's something that you all were interested in doing and would like for us to proceed with, with steps to see. One thing, Yohanna found out that we only get one shot at this for every 10 years. So we want to do it right. And we want to do it with the blessing of everyone here on council to move forward.
And I think it's important to point out that it's not just 28804 that we're competing with. We're also competing with a 28787. Some people think they live in Weverville, they don't live in Weverville. Alexander is a zip code that we also have. West Asheville, we have a shared zip code. So there are four, five different zip codes and it really impedes our ability to be Woodfin.
And we also know that 28807 is not a zip code in use at present, which kind of goes in play with what's available here in the area.
Want to comment, a few months ago, I talked to the postmaster at Grace. He said, it's moved on. And he suggested would, or he asked the question, could you live with, you know, every zip code has a four digits after it? He said, could you live with a unique four digit addition? I don't know, but maybe something I want to know.
That's for every resident.
Well, it has been used around the country for different things. He told me.
9120 was what our.
Okay, I think it's a wonderful idea.
But no, no, we currently have one. It's 9120. It's 28804 hyphen 9120.
Those allow them to zone, to zoom in on, to make their route maps better is what that four digits.
Another driving factor was there's some, there's some evidence to suggest that it impacts our ability for grants when they're looking at areas, they go by zip code and 28804 represents Beaver, Beaver Lake and it represents Riverside Drive. So that's not exactly the same demographics. And so this may help us be more competitive with certain grants.
Other questions still?
I support a hundred percent. Are there any costs associated at this point that you know about? I know you're beginning this research.
I don't know. Cost would be businesses having to change their address.
I meant in terms of with the US post office.
I don't, there was nothing that indicated that there was an expense associated other than if we were to do a survey, a public survey, then we would have to, of course, you know, cover that cost.
If this motion passes, it will allow you guys to go find out all those things.
Yep, exactly.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I move to authorize members of the communications subcommittee to pursue establishing a unique zip code on behalf of the town of Woodfin.
Is there a second? And all in favor, say yes. Hallelujah. Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, Ms. Tuck.
Thank you, Mayor. So last month I did a pretty detailed presentation on providing an introduction to municipal code enforcement. And there was a lot of good conversation, a lot of questions. And so I thought this was a topic that could be worthy of a little additional follow-up. So I just took a snapshot in time, so the last 30 days since our last discussion, looking at the code enforcement activity that has come through the town offices, just to give you some more examples to kind of introduce you to, to our different enforcement practices. So in the last 30 days, we've had 18 potential violations covering five different categories. And we covered these categories in the last presentation, noise, junk vehicles, zoning, sanitation and minimum housing. So you can see how the different potential violations break down. So I'm going to go through each of the different categories and just talk a little bit about the different violations. So for noise, as I mentioned, we had three different complaints. One was a late night party in a residential district. It was, it was from an STR. We had construction noise outside the hours that we define in our ordinance, which is 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And then we also had a third complaint regarding industrial noise. So in this particular instance, all of these potential violations were investigated. And in this case, as it relates to noise, we did not issue any notices. And that is because what we typically do is we start with a warning. So we try to make contact with the party and give them the warning. So for the first two, the late night party in the short term rental and the construction hours, those have police reports. So we have data that identifies that there was a noise issue. And in those cases, the, the complainant with the, for the short term rental, they, after understanding the process and what the next steps would be, they asked for us not to make contact with the property owner. And that does happen. Sometimes neighbors get concerned that the, the owner is going to know that it was them who complained. And, and in this case too, the complainant said that they had had luck working with the property owner in the past. So they, before we went to the step of issuing a notice or any fines, they wanted to talk to them again. So we're, we're happy to, to let them do that. But we have a record, so if we continue to have problems, we can resort to citations. There is a limit on what we can cite them for. The maximum is $500. We typically will escalate fines. So we might do a hundred dollars for the first one, 300 for the second, 500 for the third, if it continues to be a problem.
Outside of the police investigation, who on your staff does the investigations of complaints?
So most of these happen at night. So it's usually the police who respond. But our, basically it's Ricky. But it could be, it could be other staff. It sort of depends on the circumstance, who's available. And we may go and check it if it's something that came in during the daytime.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if we issue a citation, so police, if they investigate and they find that, say it's a, it's a party and it's kind of out of control, they can actually issue misdemeanors. If we're going to issue fines, that's typically an office administrative function. And so even if the police are the ones to investigate it, we would probably be the ones to issue the citation. For the, the construction outside the hours of work, we often will start with that initial contact, that first warning. We always try to focus our attention on the party responsible for the noise. Ultimately, it will be the property owner who's responsible if we can't get resolution with the party who created the noise issue. In this case, since it was construction, we happen to have the contact information for the builder. So we contacted them directly, said, hey, we got a complaint. Police had to show up. You had concrete crews out there at 4:00 AM. They were, they were, you know, very apologetic, said it was a miscommunication with the subs, which is also not uncommon. So they made, they committed to making sure all of the subcontractors knew that they had to limit their hours of construction. So again, we've got a record. So if we continue to have problems, we can move, our next step would be to issue a citation. And then that third one, the industrial noise, these are always tough because the standard for reasonable noise, when you are an industrial manufacturer in an industrially zoned area is different than what you would expect in a sort of quiet, single family neighborhood. So industrial noise, in this case, it may or may not have been unreasonable, but we have to have firsthand knowledge of the noise. So either the police need to have been there and identified it and recorded it, or our staff have to go out and actually hear the noise and understand what the noise is. By the time we show up, oftentimes the noise is not, in this case, this is intermittent noise. It's not something that is consistent. So sometimes we show up, there's no noise, we don't understand what's going on. We think that in this case, it may have been a bad bearing. We've had a complaint like this in the past. And when we talked to the plant managers, they investigated and they felt like it was an issue. And then we haven't heard any more complaints now for a year or more. And now we have a similar complaint. So we're not sure if it's the same thing or not. We have reached out to the plant manager, but we haven't heard back yet. So in this case, no notices issued. We made contact with one party.
That pizza is not coming in here, Phil.
It is.
So we did, so we did make contact with one party, hoped to make contact with the second party and purposefully didn't make contact with the third. So that was noise. For zoning, we had a number of different zoning cases. We had some unpermitted structures. We had a camper being occupied, a, a mobile home, an unpermitted mobile home that was not occupied, but was positioned on property. So in all four of these cases, the cases were open, the violations were documented, cases were opened, four different notices were issued to these four different cases. And there's been one follow-up citation in this case. And for these four cases, we've made contact with two of the property owners. You know, when they receive the notice or the citation, oftentimes they'll call us to try to understand how can this matter be resolved? And so that it's very important to us that we receive that contact.
How do you issue citations? In person or certified mail?
It's certified mail. So for zoning, we have to do certified mail. We have to make sure that the property owner actually receives it. We can hand deliver it to them and document it as being hand delivered, or we can do some sort of confirmation delivery. Here's just some photographs of the, of these different violations. So you have an unpermitted structure in the upper right or the upper left and the lower right. One was a little shed structure, another was retaining wall. You have an unpermitted mobile home, not hooked up or anything, but just sitting on the property and that camper being occupied. Moving on to junk vehicles, we had four junk vehicle violations. We issued three notices and, oh no, four, four notices. I think that's a typo. I'm sorry. I think we issued four notices and then one of those has now turned into a citation and we made contact with one property owner. So here's some examples of the kind of junk vehicles that we're investigating. So you can see in the upper left, there's no, no license plate, no tags. So these are unlicensed vehicles. Now, when we make contact, as you may recall from last month, we make contact with the property owner and they can demonstrate that the vehicles are operable, that they can, you know, turn, turnover, move back and forth, then there is no junk vehicle violation. So it's only if they're not operable. Yes, sir.
If a vehicle is oper, if it's inoperable, what's the relationship between not having tags and operation? Do you have to have both posited before it's considered junk?
Yes.
You could have an inoperable vehicle that has tags.
Correct.
And it could not be construed as junk.
Correct.
Because it has tags, okay.
Yep, that is correct.
Is the second from the left, is that the one on Short Vine, China? That is, okay, thank you.
So it just kind of gives you an idea. I, I think the camper, we are expecting, I think they indicated that it was operable. They just had to get a battery or something. Yeah, it's not damaged, you know, but you can see the, the, the third picture with the hood popped up on the, you know, probably not operable. So we'll.
The second one, do they own or have the right to park a, an RV where that is? If they demonstrated, maybe you can live in it, but do they have the right to park that there? Does that come in issue?
It's, it's private property as far as we know.
It may look like right of way though.
Yeah. A lot of our rights of way are very, very narrow.
Is there not a setback from, is that a road or is that just a driveway?
That I believe is a road.
Short vine street.
Yeah, but it's, basically we don't really have any shoulder on Short Vine. So it's just the, the platted right of way is very narrow.
Oh, for some reason I thought that with any, any vehicle, but especially like mobile home, but not mobile homes, I'm sorry, RVs, they had to be parked a certain distance from the street and the neighbor's house. And like you couldn't just plop it right in front of the house.
The standards are, they're not, they're not as explicit as they could be. You know, you could, in theory, try to say, well, you need to park a vehicle in a designated parking area and that needs to be part of your single family home site plan. But effectively, this is sort of outdoor storage. It's not really parking. So it's, it's a little bit different. It wouldn't be very different than them, you know, stacking up some, or putting a kid's play structure or stacking up some materials for a fence or something like that.
Well, should we look at that though? As an expectation of our, like how you treat your neighbor? I mean, that.
I mean, we, we can, it's very difficult to enforce and it does tend to, it will disproportionately impact people on smaller lots, typically lower income, as we talked about in our last presentation.
With an RV?
Sure.
Okay, so last question is why is there a tarp on it? Like, is there something broken with it?
I don't know. I, I think they're just protecting it.
There's plenty of land that this, there's got to be a right of way of at least four feet right there, or three or four feet for utilities.
That's probably three or four.
And you look behind it, I've been, I walked around this property, it could easily be moved away from the road. There's at least land, but they made it on that land. Do we know who owns this land? Was that part of the investigation?
I think it's the, the same person who owns the camper.
Okay. But there's a house up there behind us. Okay, all right.
So my concern is if we don't have expectation, or we don't have like set rules, then just because someone is, say that they don't have the finance to take care of an issue at this point, doesn't mean, I don't see how parking it in front like that right on the side of road benefits. Like, how is that helping them? So for us to not have expectations of how we treat our neighbor with what they have to. with what they have to look at on our property, I just, I, I wish that there was some way that we could prevent things like this from, from happening. I mean, the backyard's a different situation than the front yard.
So, I don't know that there is a concern from the neighbors. This complaint did not come from the neighbors.
The original, me sending you this did come from the neighbors. Because then, right behind this is that tree with the house with the tree that's cutting it in half.
Well, the neighbors didn't contact us about it, so-
They contacted me and I showed it to you.
Yeah, yeah, but, so I just, I, to understand the degree of concern by the neighbors is a little bit hard for me to say, because we haven't spoken to any of the neighbors. It's just, it's just been a conversation with the property owner.
There's context for that picture.
Yeah, that's just-
It's, it's, and it sits in front of this.
Yeah, so I know it's difficult, I know this part, it, it, this is difficult to manage. But if we don't do anything about it, we run the risk of, well, they're doing it, why can't I do it? They're doing it, you know, so-
So, one, one thing that, so our standards are minimum compliance. So if we said, for instance, all vehicles must be parked or stored 20 feet from the edge of pavement, or, you know, I don't know, I'm just sort of making something up. It might work well, in this case, to move that trailer in, into a location, or that camper into a location that will be less obtrusive. But there will be just as many, if not more, cases where we now create a hardship for somebody because their only option is to, to park it in the location that is within 20 feet.
Don't some neighborhoods have rules, no RVs? Is that an, can't you have an HOA?
They may, but those would be private restrictions that we would-
Private, okay, thank you, got it, okay. Keep going. I mean, we appreciate this.
Sanitation, we had two complaints. One case got resolved before we could even make contact with anybody, so we never sent a notice, and then one case remains open. We did issue a notice for the one that remains open, and we did make contact with that property owner. So, pretty classic, you know, on the left, it's just an unkempt yard. This is the one that got resolved before we could ever even issue a notice, so. And that's not uncommon. People sometimes, if the properties are not occupied, or even if they are, but they rely on somebody else to do the yard work, you know, it might get kind of tall.
So what's showing up sometimes triggers a positive outcome?
Or, or it's just, it's just, takes a while, you know, like, they, they get it mowed, but maybe it's every month or every other month, I, you know, it's hard to know. And then the situation on the right is, is a commercial property. I mean, it's a residential building, but it's a commercial residential building off of Weaverville Road, and, you know, that appears to be C and D or construction debris that-
That's been like that for years.
Yeah, and so we did, this is the one where we did issue the notice, and we have had contact with the property owner, so hopefully this will get resolved soon.
That has been more than two years like that.
Well, we've just made contact with them now.
So there's a good chance you can make them clean this up?
I think so. I think there's a good chance.
You know, this is, people are asking us to do something about it, so this is good stuff.
And then the last category is municipal, is minimum housing. We had five complaints. All five cases remain open. We have mailed notices to all five in this case, and we've made contact with two of the property owners.
And Shannon, these are complaints from neighbors, they, or from someone, a resident?
No, they, no, one of these is one that we just came across doing inspections, and then some of them are complaints, or, you know, complaints via another party.
Tell me, tell me if I'm not handling it right. The one in the middle looks like, looks like 92 Elk Mountain Road with that trailer in the back. You're taking that across the fence. That property owner contacted me, asked me to come over and look at it. Does that count? Do you record that when I tell you the property owner asked me to look at it and asked me to find out?
We just record it as a complaint. We don't record that this property owner, because they didn't contact us, so-
You was complaining third-party, which happens to turn out to be me in this case.
Yeah, so you're, you're the party who, who made us aware of the potential violation that caused us to go out and do the investigation. So-
Got you.
And so you can see, I, I include these photos just to kind of give you an idea. So, we don't, these are all, in this case, these are all vacant, unoccupied properties. Nobody's trying to live here, obviously, the one in the middle. But there are minimum housing standards that deal with sort of the integrity of the structure that is visible typically, or often from the boundary of the property. But there are minimum housing violations that can be occurring inside the structure. Given the exterior condition of these properties, I certainly expect the interior has minimum housing violations. But we don't document those unless we're invited in to perform an inspection, so.
Let me ask you a question to that point. Since two of your examples were neighbors that asked me to come, would, do you want me to connect you with them so that you can go inside, or ask the owner?
It has to be the owner. It can't be a neighbor asking me to go in somebody else's property.
The owners are right there, and both neighbors tell me that, okay, let me let you go in.
It, it doesn't, I don't think in these cases that going inside is really necessary, that, that what we're trying to do in most instances where people aren't occupied, the interior inspection or what's going on the inside is more important if somebody's trying to live there. And sometimes we're invited in because the tenant invites us in because they're upset that the landlord hasn't performed some sort of maintenance.
Let me note something that's in the statutes and is a real clear intent of the state as far as, as complaints, you know, what is supposed to be complaint-driven, is that the statutory authority you've got talks about a petition filed with a public officer, who's, you know, who's much popular in there, is to be friends with the whole town, that is supposed to be generated by at least five, even the public authorities. So, like Shannon says, you're out and about, you see, oh, that's a hundred code violation right there of the minimum housing code. We can enforce it on through our own motion. But it speaks to, if it's not from the town, then it's at least five residents in the jurisdiction. And so that's, unless it's the, and the only other circumstance is the tenant, and there really is protection of a tenant that says they got to have adequate heat source.
Heat, water, right. Can't have holes in the floors, you got to have working plumbing.
I don't think any that we've talked about have had, have been occupied.
None of these are occupied.
I would never go there.
Now, this is, this is, when we talk about minimum housing, you know, if, if somebody is occupying a structure that has these kinds of issues, as we discussed last month, we would typically try to connect them with resources, either the emergency home repair program, and there's several in our county, or some other resource. If it's a dilapidated or an unoccupied structure such as these, we will try to make contact, we will send notices to the property owners, identifying what the problems are and asking them to address those problems. And depending on the structure, like the one in the middle, the only real effective way to address that is to remove it. It's a trailer, so it should, it's removable, it's not that, you know, shouldn't be that difficult. But for the example on the left and the one on the right, the, the typical solution in these cases is to simply either board it, secure it, lock it, do something to keep it from being ajar, or being open, having a gaping opening. Yes, sir.
So we can, we can take some action without five neighbors complaining?
Well, we're investigating, so we identify the violation, and so, yes.
But is the ideal way to do it, the neighbors all around, the one in the middle that has the dilapidated house in front? Is the ideal situation to have five of them sign a letter? Does that help? Is that what I need to be telling them?
I, I don't know, I think, I don't think so, because certainly we would entertain, right? If they gave us a, we would absolutely, you know, record that and, and put that in the, in the file. But, again, the, the outcome in most of these instances, the desired outcome is to board up the structure, or to secure the structure, to close those openings, to make sure it's stable. It's not to demolish it, or, you know, kind of compel the owner to take action that they're not prepared to take. Boarding up, securing openings is usually not that difficult.
Right, but that, in some of these cases, like the one on the left, the neighbor said, they see light in there, they see lighters at night. And that's, to me, freaky dangerous, that we know how they get in, there's a giant hole, so.
Yeah, the one on the left is one that we identified in our field investigation. So that's not the one that you reported, but, but yes. So we hear that, that's why I think reporting that is important. If you see somebody trespassing on property that you know is vacant and occupied, it should be reported to the police and let the police address it. We do not want to attract criminal activity or people trespassing, so we want to discourage that.
Or burning a building down.
Or burning a building down. So, we would like for neighbors to report those, when they see those, those occurrences.
Does the notification, the initial notification that goes out to a property owner, does that notification include, here's the process, as in, you're in stage one. We're asking you to, you know, secure that red door, for example. Does that notification include what might happen in stage two and three if the property owner does not do anything?
No, so the way the notice works is we identify what the violation is. So in this case, an unsecured structure, and that they have a certain amount of time to address the violation. And if they have any questions, we invite them to contact us.
What if they say, Shannon, Miss Tuck, I don't have any money, I'm broke. I can't, I can't do that. What do they do, what happens then?
Then we would try to put them in contact with volunteers or other resources in our community to secure the property.
Maybe the emergency repair fund?
Probably not the emergency repair fund, but I think there's other sources that we could certainly tap into, and volunteers who are willing to help with this kind of-
And if we couldn't, and they gave you permission, could Johnny's guys go do it, or does that not done?
I would prefer to have volunteers do it, and I would, we would need to come up with some permission, you know, some sort of form for the property owner to execute, giving us permission to, to, to do this work. I, I think that is the path of least resistance that gets us what we need, which is making sure that we don't have safety issues.
So if you go to the next slide?
Well, actually, I'm still on the notification. So, I heard what you said about notification. Now, is that, is that sort of standard in different municipalities? Or do other municipalities actually lay out a sequence that you're in stage one?
It is, it is statutorily, it is, you may recall this spread, or this flow chart from the last discussion, it is statutorily very specific as to the process you follow. So, you literally ask that first question, you perform the inspection. Is there's no violation, no action? If there is, you have to, you know, send the notice, provide a hearing date, all of this. So you have to go through this process, and it's very specific in statistics.
And notifications, initial notifications typically don't lay out this process.
We do not offer, and we do not offer what the solution is. That is up to the property owner. Now, we might meet with them, we may meet with them and say, you know, the easiest thing for you to do is just, you know, oh, I don't have enough money to demolish the structure, my nephew wants me to do it, oh, well, just, you know, go buy some four-by-eight sheets of plywood.
But the notice that says, I observed from the street, these clear violations are going to suggest what the problem is. Like, you have no signos whatsoever, you know, this is-
Right, my questions, gentlemen, questions are really about, does the initial notification make clear that-
If you don't do this.
There are consequences tonight.
No, it, it, no, I mean, it's, it's really-
I'm not sure that it should, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I don't think it should. I think our goal is compliance. With enforcement, goal is always compliance. So we don't necessarily want to threaten or badger people, or make them feel like, oh, if you don't do what we-
Make it safe, period.
Yeah, compliance, right, which means making it safe, yeah.
Okay, got you.
So let me, let me pop back here. So here's just a few more photos of examples of, of things that are minimum housing violations. So, you know, here you've got another, you have a broken window with another opening and a floorboard where if somebody were to approach the door, they could potentially fall through. So, these are, are good examples. Now, oh, sorry, wrong picture. So, this next set of pictures I include. Now, in all three cases, these are properties that do have violations on the property that have been sent notices. But I included them, and I am very specific with the, the view that I'm providing here, to share with you, just imagine that these aren't, these are a three different set of properties, where this is the complaint. You know, the, the porch is leaning, the siding is, the paint's peeling, the soffit is rotting, the gutter's not connected properly. These are not viola, like, if that was the only thing on the property, that would not necessarily be a minimum housing violation. There is no structural issue, it's not posing a threat to the public. Now, the porch is questionable, I almost didn't include that one, because that one's, if you look closely, that porch is leaning pretty badly. It's, it's kind of coming off. But we often see porches that have a slope to them, but they're not necessarily a minimum housing violation. So I just, I, I took a little liberty with that one. So I just, again, minimum housing will not address an aesthetic concern, or a concern about blight, or necessarily, people will still, you know, one person's standards for how they maintain their property is different than another person's standards.
I did see a vehicle there the other day. So the notice that you sent must have gotten-
Triggered some action, yes, yeah.
Will you describe the timeline when you go through these bullets? Like, to get from the first bullet to the last? Kind of time, is that a month, 60 days?
Yeah, and, and not all of these apply to all cases.
Got you.
So, we, we investigate that, we get the complaint, we investigate that property, you know, we can usually get out to do an investigation within a day or two. We might try to make contact with the property owner if we have their contact information, or somebody can tell us how. We may start there, before we even do a notice. If we can't, we'll send a notice, it goes to the property owner on record, and it outlines, you know, what the next steps are, and invite them to contact us to discuss compliance. So, once they contact us, and again, they have a certain amount of time to respond, so some might respond right away, some might take the full amount of time to respond. And then we just basically talk to them about what the concern is. If we get a response, if somebody calls us after they receive that notice, we have very good success in getting compliance. We often, in these cases, run into situations where the property is owned by somebody who's in a nursing home, or is, it's in probate, and nobody's taking care of it, and it's, you know, so, in those situations, it's much harder to get compliance. And that's, you know, what that flow chart is for, is, you know, if you get no compliance, nothing happens, that there are steps we can consider. I would suggest we look at those on a case-by-case basis. I think in some cases, it may make sense for us to try to take action, in other cases, it may not.
There are a few that I, I will send you in the next couple, no rush on them, that have been in the town, have been in the town system for years and years, and the property owner simply refused to do anything. On those, do you have, can you do something extra if you, if you find an old file where, my God, we've been trying to get this kind of-
Not if it's been years, we would have to start over.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be a protracted process.
There are minimums in the statutes where I do think you'd, you'd want to start over and say, I'm seeing a violation here, I'm going to cite you for this. They get a, a, between 10 and 30 days for that initial hearing.
There's a timeline.
There is, and if the, if that hearing finds violations, that either it's deteriorated so it can be improved, and brought into compliance for less than 50% of the home value, then that's what the order is, that's 90 days. If it's dilapidated so it cannot be brought into compliance with the code for less than 50% of the value, like it's completely burned out, for example, and maybe nobody's doing anything within 90 days. We often will, I always advise stretching that out if you're getting any kind of response. And I think that happens a lot, with folks like, I'm trying. I'm fighting an insurance company, that, you know, the, this is ready as hell, she's in a nursing home, we're trying to figure out what we can, we can pull together to do it.
Yeah, we, we have one case where a tree is, you know, damaged, kind of basically cut the structure in half. We have a couple of those. And in one case, it was something that happened a long time ago, and the property owner never addressed it, and should have, in my opinion. And they have now, it's, it's demolished now, after we issued the notice of violation. But it'd been sitting like that for a long time. So, so that's a situation where we recognize that individual has the means, they're, they just haven't taken action for different reasons. His reasons were not good reasons, in my opinion. So, that's, that's a situation where we do want to try to, you know, encourage through notices of violation, citations in hearings and such, that they take action.
And admission of probate, and I see that one all the time. Somebody's, like, 10 people have inherited this, a fraction of a share. None of them live here, they don't want it, they don't even, you may not even know where it is. And it makes it much harder to, to get them all served with process, to do the things where you can, you know, you can get that done. They are going to need a prod to do anything, because nobody cares.
And I want to make a statement, point of personal privilege. I've been bringing a lot of these up. All of them have been generated- All of them have been generated by a resident coming to me and saying, let me take you, let me show you. And it has been complaints, almost all of these, they've seen fires inside. We, we obviously see holes in the property. The one lady had to build a fence. She said, the rats are so big as cats. I had to build this fence to keep the rats from coming over. So the only intention I have is to get compliance, some of these neighbors. And some of them have said they've been complaining for years.
Yeah.
I, I'd like for us to.
They may have been complaining, but we, we may or may not have a record of that complaint.
I understand. But in some cases, I've been shown a letter, a copy of a letter. So, okay. My only request is that these obvious ones, if we could get it to compliance, that'll be a huge win for the community, because some of these are elderly people. They're scared to death when they see a flashlight in the property next door at two in the morning. So.
Well, I wanted to go back to my example about the tree, the structures that have trees that basically cut the homes in half. So I mentioned the one where I thought that the property owner had the means, they should have taken care of it. They never did. Took them two years to finally resolve it. We have another case where the tree is the result of Hurricane Hleen. That's an issue where we issued that notice of violation, but that individual contacted us right away, said, I have applied for FEMA for assistance. I don't know what's taking so long, but I am trying to get this resolved. Meanwhile, I'm living at my sister's, all of that. So that is a very good example of one where we would not escalate this to the next step. We have good reason to expect that this will be resolved in appropriate period of time, and we want to respect that individual's right to get that assistance.
But in the meantime, that property is, is wide open. Do we try to do minimum compliance on that or just let whatever happens, happen there?
It hasn't.
Are you both talking about the same property, by the way?
Short vine, right?
No, it's walnut.
Short vine, it may be a different.
Short vine is the one that did get removed, isn't it? Yeah.
Short vine was that way last week, and nothing had happened. So they are cleaning up short vine?
Well, not short vine is a house with a tree.
And, and I should say, we really, I would prefer that we not specifically identify addresses. I mean, I purposely kept addresses out of these pictures. I don't think that we should be doing that. If you have questions, you know, please talk to me afterwards.
No, no, I agree with that. I'll cooperate with it as long as you assure us that we're going to try to get these worst cases to compliance. I'm happy with that. I'm grateful.
Well, I think I've explained what our process would be and when we would escalate something to the next step and when we wouldn't. If council, if council wants to take stronger action, I would need that policy direction from all of council. So otherwise, I'm, I'm staying with the process that we have outlined.
And thank you for this. I think it's helpful. I wanted to learn about this.
So, and, and just in summary, we, again, we had eighteen potential violations, thirteen of them came through complaints, and five were staff identified in our, just in our field work. All eighteen were investigated, and fifteen of those were confirmed. So not every complaint is a doc, you know, is a violation. So, but we, we always investigate them. Thirteen notices were issued. Two of the properties had more than one violation. So, so sometimes, it depends on the situation. Sometimes we'll send two notices to the same property. Sometimes we'll do one notice with two different violations. It just sort of depends. Two, two of the thirteen cases have progressed to citations, and we made contact with seven individuals out of those thirteen.
So that's, that's pretty good.
It's pretty good. Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's not a quick process. It is a process. So it does take some time.
The fact that we're starting to work on it is fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I, I want to make it clear, we have always done enforcement. We are not doing something now that we didn't do for the last three and a half, four years. We are not always aware of all violations, so somebody has to bring that to our attention. But we have always done enforcement, so. And that's it. That's all I got, unless anybody has any questions.
Other questions from council?
I just have one comment.
Go, go for it.
First, I appreciate the difference between aesthetic dimensions and people having a right to their bad taste or good taste or any kind of taste. I think that is essentially preserved. I appreciate the discussion of minimum housing and. I'm gonna wait. On minimum housing, is the framework for the discussion of minimum housing primarily issues of safety and fire?
It's just safety. I mean, safety covers a lot of things. Yeah. Fire being one of the safety concerns. Yeah. I did want to just take one minute and, yeah, I'll, I'll, I just want to take one minute and talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities. I covered this last time, but I think it's worth covering it again. The town is responsible for minimum housing enforcement. So all of the pictures that you've seen, all of the cases or scenarios that we've described, this is all minimum housing. So we would be the entity responsible for this. Buncombe County handles our building permits and inspections. So that is different than minimum housing. So they are not responsible for minimum housing. Buncombe County, as building inspectors, have the authority to condemn property. We do not through minimum housing. But the effect is essentially the same. There, there is no real benefit to condemnation. What it does is it, it's a, a process for them to document that there, this property cannot be reoccupied until building permits are pulled. So it triggers their building inspection and review process.
That sounds like a benefit, if that's what condemnation does.
I, I mean, minimum housing is for the end purpose of trying to bring property, well, to make property safe, but to bring it up to a habitable standard. That may or may not require building permits. Most of the time, it probably would. But a condemnation, in these cases of these structures that are pretty far gone, it, it doesn't really, I mean, nobody's trying to live in these structures. So it's not really, we don't really need condemnation. I think condemnation's more common in communities where they do minimum housing, where the building inspection department does minimum housing.
I see.
We do not. The fire marshal also has a, the authority to post property as being unsafe for firefighting. So should that structure catch on fire, and there is one of these signs on the property that basically says, you do not, as a firefighter, you do not enter that building to fight the fire. But they also exercise discretion when they show up on a site, and if they see a structure that's this far gone, they would not enter the structure anyway. Nobody's living in it. There's no reason for them to do that. So again, it's something that you can do, but it's not, it's not really necessary for compliance.
And I don't think either one of those has an enforcement mechanism like minimum housing. You can take action, throw it down the line if it applies to bringing in compliance.
Correct. It's documenting something.
You go in and pursue a remedy that says, we're gonna go do it if you won't, and the cost will be a lien against the property. None of that's easy, none of it's quick. But I don't know that building code violations that, that result in that kind of condemnation or a fire code violation, I think it's an order not to occupy it. And if you did anyway, you'd have like a, there's probably ordinance that you violated, and you have, have a symbol, have, may have a criminal penalty for it, like a misdemeanor. But it's, it's not, they're not, they're getting any.
Thank you.
And also Buncombe County is very reluctant to get. We did have a case where a structure was being occupied, and we asked them to look at it for condemnation purposes, and they wouldn't. So they.
Why? Why not? Just Buncombe County? I mean, our friends at Buncombe County.
I think it's a similar concern that it's like, if, if we take action, you're gonna have four people who have no place to live. So we're, we're kicking people out who have no other options. So they're very reluctant to, to take that kind of action.
Like the whole theory in this country doesn't require continual inspection for building code compliance. I mean, they just don't generally do that.
We used to. We used to, probably fifteen years ago, we had minimum housing inspections that were performed periodically.
For building code compliance?
For minimum housing compliance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's, again, that's a different whole other track.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it just makes me think of that condo in Miami, wasn't it?
Yeah.
A year ago.
Yeah.
All it would take is one death for us to be having a different conversation.
It was a, a building code compliance officer, a local officer at state.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, even fifteen years, like whenever, whenever I bought my first house.
They did hear, and even for rental properties, you had to go through a process where before you could change, there was an inspection.
Yeah. Even owner occupied, so rental properties were on periodic inspections. Owner occupied properties happened every time the property turned over. So, because I remember the first house we bought, we had building inspection, everything, like the normal building inspection that you do. Then we had the city inspector come for that minimum housing inspection. And some of the things that they identified really weren't minimum housing things as much as they were building code things, like, you know, handrails that were not, that were too wobbly on the front porch, that kind of thing. So it's, it, it was something that helped improve the condition of our housing stock, but that authority was specifically taken away by the general assembly many years ago.
All right, folks, great discussion. Thank you. Thank you for your patience with us. Before we ask the question about executive session, isn't there another friendly piece of business?
Yes. And I got to step out for just a minute.
Go ahead. You'll be right back.
Let, that's there, or anybody else?
We, we are, we want to thank you and honor you for being on the town council, Hazel. That's what's happening now.
Well, thank you.
You, when you decided to run, the community wanted you to run. You did. You did what they wanted to, and that counts for a lot.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And you made a difference with a lot of the landscaping and tree work and all sorts of things for us here.
Think about what we have always, as a group, accomplished since you got sworn in.
I have. Oh.
And you never want to poke me in the side.
I, I have.
She probably should have a couple of times, but.
I would like to also express, express my appreciation, Hazel, for all of what you've contributed to council. I don't think there's any other council member who has been involved in as many of our more environmentally based initiatives than you have. So I really appreciate your contribution to all of those efforts and everything that you helped us achieve. So, thank you.
Well, it's been my honor. These four years have just flown by.
Exactly.
And I've, I've learned so much from everybody and just from the experience, and I feel very privileged that I've got to contribute what I did.